A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Truman, you were going to speak as far as American public comment. I just wanted to go ahead and put your name down here.
Yeah, I would please.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Welcome, everyone. First, before I get started, I wanted to take a little bit of time to thank Phoebe for the job she's done as President of this Commission for the last year. I didn't do that last time, and I was sorry I did. And I think you've done a really good job hopping in the middle of this and doing what you could to keep this ship up. I'll call the meeting to order. Most President Darryl Baker, County Clerk Charles Vance, President Phoebe Harless, Commissioner Tecky Matthews, Commissioner. First thing on agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Commission meeting until January the 5th at 6:00.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that an all yes?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and take the people that...well, let's see, we have several people signed in to speak on public comment. The only one I have on this, I'm going to go ahead and let go first, Doug Davis from Kentucky.
Yeah. I was just wondering how we can go about getting city water ran up Kentucky holler.
What do you have there?
I got a list of everybody that wants to get it up there.
Okay, you want to bring that? I talked with some of the people in Kentucky about the extension of their line to Buck Ward, I think it is Lonnie Wilson's house up there. And there are several people. I wanted to basically have him come and ask the Commission if we do get monies available through the self-help project, because I think this is one that fits that criteria for what we've been looking at. And I want him to come and, you know, give us his request, a formal request for that. And that way, we can go ahead and get in touch with those people over there that would work with us on that, Town of West Ham, and Branch McKit, PSD, and things of that nature, to talk to them about how much, how far it would go, and things like that, and what the cost would be. I told him historically what we've done in the past is buy the pipeline if we could find people to put it in and to supervise the installation of the pipeline up through there. Of course, right now, money's really tight, but I wanted to make sure that these projects that could be done, could possibly be done on self-help projects, we'd have a list of them and be able to pick them based upon what we could afford, and what needs to be done, and how many people would be served by it. So I appreciate...is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, that's all I wanted.
Okay. And I've been approached by more than just him about this particular area up there, and I think it's something that there's no...we don't have to put any kind of a pump there or lifts or anything, and it's just basically extending the line up the holler. So I just wanted to bring that for the Commission, and if it's okay with the Commission, then we'll just go ahead and get those numbers as far as water cost and things of that nature. Because we already had the number...we have the people here that we contact concerning the need for water and things like that. But I do appreciate you bringing this before us, so we can go ahead and get started on our comments.
All right.
Okay, next on public comment, Mr. Chayton, Senator Chayton, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Vance, Mr. Harless, Commissioner Matthews, Assistant Prosecutor Stevens, nice to see you again. I appreciate you inviting me down to speak to you for a few minutes, and I'll be brief. But I bring good news to you, I think, for Lincoln County to recover for some of the bad things that's been done to you through the distribution of opioid drugs. As you might know, Dr. Vance and other Commissioners, I represented in the Senate for a long time, Mingo, McDowell, Wayne, and part of Wyoming counties. And McDowell County has a horrible drug problem, and they contacted me, and when I was contacted about it, I was able to associate with a company out of...a law firm out of Florida, and they're called Morgan &amp; Morgan. And they're nationwide, and they're like 3,000 strong, and all they do is complex litigation. And when I told them some of the problems that was going on in McDowell County, they started to research it. And they not only researched McDowell County, but they researched Mercer, Wyoming, Lincoln, Logan, all the southern counties, and we all have this problem. West Virginia, as you all know, and they came up with this, is a...has the highest overdose rate in the country. West Virginia leads the nation in fatal drug overdoses. They're caused by not illegal drugs, by prescription drugs. Where do these prescription drugs come from? By far and wide, they come from a company called McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health, and America Bergen. Just yesterday, and you might have seen this in the paper, this McKesson company was fined and paid $150 million out of their Maryland office for distributing these opioid drugs that's highly deadly and addictive. Now, what happened? They have sold so many in these southern counties, and people are hooked on them. Thirty-five percent of the babies born in West Virginia, and this is true in Lincoln County too, are now drug addicted. There's a whole generation, Doctor, as you well know, of kids that are being raised by their grandparents because the parents were hooked on prescription drugs. It's just so sad. What's the cost? The cost is just devastating, not only to your county and your coffers, but the jail bills, for example, are skyrocketing, because ninety percent, as Prosecutor Parker well knows, of the criminal cases are now drug-related. And that's not only true in Lincoln County, but all of these southern counties. And so we're ground zero. Morgan &amp; Morgan called me and said, "Do you know where a place named Kermit, West Virginia, is?" Of course, Kermit's in my hometown, and you all know where Kermit is. It is ground zero of all of West Virginia. Last year, Doctor, the...these three big companies that sell in this poison pill by through prescriptions, they sold 3,194,000 of these opioid pills in Kermit, West Virginia, and they have 400 people in it. Three million, 194,000. Just yesterday, Kermit employed me and Tish in our firm and Morgan &amp; Morgan to do something about it, and we're going to file a suit for them on a city level to fight back. But we want you all to know that you all have a golden opportunity, because you're in the top four counties that are addicted, your people are, to prescription drugs. We have put a team together that really knows how to go after these distributors. Once we file the suit in McDowell County, and it's up and rolling, Mercer County heard about it, some other counties heard about it, and there's a lot of other lawyers that are now going around presenting themselves and saying, "We'd like to represent you." And some of them are good lawyers, Doctor. Some of them are very good. But the thing is, and if you're going to take on a Fortune 500 company like McKesson, who made $179 billion last year, not...$179 billion, and Cardinal, who made $102 billion, they have the best lawyers, the best experts in all of the country. If they want to fly one into Lincoln County, if we sue them from San Francisco, they've got all the jets in the world to do it. They're going to go after you. If you don't have deep pockets, if you're not hooked up with the right people to fight these people, you know, it would just break you. These people are experts in complex litigation. You can research them on Google, or anybody that knows them, and we're really honored to associate with them. We are the local trial counsel. Tish and I, that's what we do for a living. We try cases in front of a jury. We've tried them in Lincoln County. We try them everywhere. They do the research. They have retired experts from the FBI. We have a...the number-one guy in West Virginia who did the state case when the state got sued...I mean, the state sued McKesson. They said it paid off, what was it, $20 million the other day that the Attorney General got? Well, we got that same expert there, it's going to put the damages together for Lincoln County and the other counties, if you all want to go forward with it. But there's no downside to it. You can only recover for everything that they put you all through. There'll be no cost involved with you all, and any recovery will also be unencumbered. I used to be on the County Commission, so I know how things get encumbered. The state suit, when they tucked away their $20 million, guess what? None of the counties, the political subdivision that you're in, is going to get one nickel of that. None of the cities is going to get one nickel of it. But if this would be a lawsuit by the people of Lincoln County, brought by you all, and sanctioned by you all, any money that you recover will be straight to your coffers, and you can use it as you want to, to try to rebuild this county for that death and destruction. We are honored here. I had the three presentations that Tish brought with us, I wanted to submit with you. I didn't want to take all your time, but it gets all the facts and the figures, the highest death rate, how much you got. You got three of them?
I have three.
Okay. We can submit those to you. We also would like to submit a proposed contract for you to look at. We...the contracts that we sign are just like a standard contingency fee contract, Doctor. It'd be like a car wreck. If you hired us for that, we would charge you two-thirds on a contingency fee basis, and I mean, sorry, we would charge you a third, and you'd get two-thirds. Thank you. I will. I'm sorry. I'm going to judge you off the roof here. Got it backwards. But it's pretty standard, and we will, of course, absorb all the costs. If we recover nothing, and we spend millions in costs, we'll eat that. No, nothing to you all. Have any questions, I can answer while I'm here. I do appreciate you working me in, though I'm late to getting on the docket. But I...as I tell everybody, try to look at this like if you're hiring a lawyer, you know what you go through, hiring a doctor. If you're going to have some heart surgery, you don't necessarily want the cheapest cardiologist, you want the best. We think with what's going to happen, and how these companies are going to come and defend this, and how far they're going to go with it, that if we don't have somebody backed up like Morgan &amp; Morgan, who has the resources, and it's all they do is complex litigation, to back us up, it's a great team. We have two other law firms in Charleston that do a lot of research, so we're willing to put a lot of our time and a lot of our effort, a lot of our own money in it. That's how strong we feel about it. Because when they sell 3,194,000 of these opioid pills in Kermit, West Virginia, and the whole town is just about devastated, I want to take, bring that case up by a Mingo County jury for Kermit, just like I want to bring this case, what they've done to you in Lincoln County, upstairs before a Lincoln County jury. And that's our plan. We don't mean to go to federal court anywhere. We mean to file the case here in Lincoln County, because Lincoln County's been damaged. And that's our plan for each county. We'd be honored to represent you. We appreciate your time and attention. Tish, you want to say anything?
If we answer any questions, if you have any...
Yeah, anything. Or if you think about something later on, we left it with you, just give us a call, and we'll be happy to come back or answer the phone or anything.
We really appreciate you coming by.
Thanks again. Honored to be here.
And this is something that we debated for a little while, and I think having talked with people that last night, because I think that we, as a commission, would not be doing our job if we didn't look into something very like this, because not only seeing it for the end as far as law enforcement here, I see it as far as how it impacts our families in this county. And, you know, we have whole family units just torn apart, and they're not ever going to get better till somebody has to pay the price for what they've done. And, you know, I...it's one of the saddest things I have to deal with as a physician, is not dealing with the drug addict, but deal with the...what's happened, the cause of the addiction, and what it...how it affects the other members of the family, who are very innocent about everything, but they're the ones that suffer the most. Of course, we're also looking at a jail bill that we can no longer afford, and possibly this could be some mechanism that we can get monies to be able to stay up with our jail bill like it should be.
Absolutely.
But since we've lost our coal severance, which we used to pay for our jail bill, we have...we do not have the monies to pay our jail bill. So this is something that I think the Commission's very serious about, and we...I think from talking with the Commissioners, we will make a decision fairly soon with this, and we will get back with you on it.
We appreciate you very much.
No problem.
We're going to go ahead. Don't worry, we're going to go to that Dana Scott dance. We're going to be there. Good to see you again. Blessings.
Next on the signed-in for public comment is Alan Ashworth. You want to come forward, Alan?
I hope I don't take too much time, but I did have several questions, as well as some statements, and I feel I deserve an answer to it, as we had earlier. First off, I want to know who was on the Lincoln County Civil Service Commission? Because that's an unclear thing that we're not getting answers to.
As far as I know, John Smith is on it. I talked with Jeff Hughes on Tuesday, and he was on at the end, but I think he's resigned yesterday, wasn't he? He's resigned the board from yesterday. Okay, we haven't seen him written, but he talked...when I talked to him Tuesday night, he told me that he would be resigning the board, but we haven't received written confirmation.
Are you aware of what's the code, 714-3 states, when it talks about governing the Civil Service Commission, and what it takes to have a Civil Service Commission? Are you aware of that state code?
Yeah, I have reviewed those. I refer all those to the prosecutor and have the prosecutor make determinations on how we deal with the Civil Service Commission and their protocol.
Okay. What I'm asking is, are you aware of what it takes on your part to have a Civil Service Commission?
Yeah, I know that civil...I can tell you this. I know that Civil Service Commission, we'll have to appoint members back to us, because there's only one person on that now.
Right.
And then they would go from there and do the job they're supposed to do as far as competitive examinations and things of that nature.
Well, state code says there's required to be three people on the Civil Service Commission. Ed Baker was on the Civil Service Commission until he got emergency hired here at the Sheriff's Office on November 3rd last year. State code says the Deputy Sheriff's Association of each county, as well as the bar association, which Lincoln County has neither, shall appoint one person, and the County Commission shall appoint the other. In the absence of the bar and the Deputy Sheriff's Association, the County Commission has ten days in which to appoint someone to the Civil Service Commission. That's also here in the state code. I mean, you don't have to look at it, but I'd like for you at least to have it, to see what I'm saying. But that's been failed to be done. It's been three months, and that's why we're in the position we're in with the Civil Service Commission. That's not only for myself, but for the deputies that currently work here, they have no protection. My next question, is it customary for you, the County Commission, to consult Mr. Jim Gaypart before you proceed with any hire, or with any emergency hire more especially?
It has always been my personal belief that if we were dealing with a legal matter, and the correct way to proceed, I would consult the prosecutor, or assist the prosecutor on that.
Okay. Do you understand that when Mr. Ed Baker was emergency hired, you consulted Jim Gaypart over that?
I was not present at the time. I didn't...I did not consult him at that time.
Is it customary that the county purchase uniforms for people that have not been hired yet?
I...I don't know. I really haven't. Like I said, this is my...this is my second meeting being president, so I'm not sure we can...
I mean, this is for anybody. I mean, you've all been there.
I think the Sheriff's Department has the budget for uniforms, even if you're not...
But is it customary that they would buy uniforms for people who don't work here?
We don't buy uniforms. We don't need to buy them.
Public record, Dustin Bryant, he resigned. He put in his two-week notice on October 17th, and his final date was October 27th. Ed Baker, the county, the Sheriff's Office, whoever, placed an order for uniforms for him on October 24th of 2016, and the County Commission had approved him to be hired until November 20...or November the 3rd of 2016. Now, the question I have is, in the last meeting, whenever I was put up for emergency hire, it was stated that you consulted Jim Gaypart about my hire, and at the time, you were not the acting president, and I understand that. But it was stated that for an emergency hire to take place, there has to be a non-competitive civil service test and a medical evaluation. Is that correct?
Yes, I think it's 777, isn't it?
I did.
I'm not sure, but I think that's...
And you're aware that that did not happen? None of that happened?
What do you mean, none of that happened?
There was no competitive exam, no non-competitive exam?
Well, those are...the way I understand, those are administered by the Civil Service Commission.
And there was no Civil Service Commission to administer that?
Well, I think when the sheriff was here the last time, that's why you told him to get in touch with the Civil Service Commission. And I know he had a letter produced that John Smith had signed. I took that letter to the prosecutor and asked him about the letter, if we could proceed on that or not. And he brought the questions that I sent the letter back. I mean, my letter to Sheriff Lindbergh was addressing those concerns that the prosecutor had. And that's...that's where we were at.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about when Mr. Baker was hired. I'm not talking about myself.
Oh, I didn't...I didn't have...I mean, when Mr. Baker...I will make this statement, because it was brought up in my discussion with the prosecutor about Mr. Baker being hired, and he basically told me, "Just because you do something wrong one time doesn't mean you continue to do something wrong."
Well, that's exactly what I wanted to point out, is things have not been done wrong one time. Things have been done wrong multiple times. Scott Polly, the former president of the Civil Service Commission, is here. He came along for me and the sheriff to maybe answer some other questions you may have. Also, public record, the last time anything was done for the Civil Service Commission was in February of 2014. I know there's been several people hired since then.
Well, I knew they took an exam in October or November of 2014. That's all unfamiliar. Because I know Mr. Sowers...
They made a hire in October of 14.
You what?
They made a hire in October of 14.
You're talking about the Commission, did you?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, like I said, the only thing I know of, it came up in the last meeting, that Mr. Sowers had took the test in October of 2014 or November of 2014. And that's...that's all I know about that.
Well, basically, I want to ask you a question to get your opinion. Nothing's unlawful here, and it's not been done legally. We put me up for emergency hire in the last meeting, and, you know, as expected, it was shot down because of a whole host of reasons and a whole list of things. And I understand that, you know, Jim Gaypart may have said, "You're not going to do things, continue to do things illegal." But I'm forced to wonder, you know, it's fairly obvious that I did sue the county, I sued the previous sheriff, but, you know, why...why is everything being made so complicated on me? Especially with the reinstatement, that wasn't discussed in the last meeting, but reinstatement has absolutely nothing to do with the Lincoln County Commission. And if you have any question with that, you can contact Mr. John Tier, the lawyer for the State Sheriff's Association. The Civil Service Commission hires and reappoints a reinstatement. You know, that has nothing to do with it.
It's my understanding, the Civil Service doesn't hire.
Not a new hire, but they do do reinstatement.
They do do reinstatement, which requires a non-competitive exam, as best I remember at the time.
Not a reinstatement, it does not.
I'm sorry?
Not a reinstatement, it does not.
Well, it's under that code. At least, that's why...you know, I think what might be best, Alan, is if you want to, is to get your lawyer from the Deputy Sheriff's Association, go ahead and talk with the prosecutor. Because, you know, on legal matters, I consult him and go under his direction.
I understand that.
He could probably better answer these than me, because I'm basically operating under what he's telling me.
I understand that. The only thing I'm asking is for a fair opportunity. You know, I understand that I sued the county, but, you know, who wouldn't whenever you were asked to do and told to do things that were illegal and corrupt? I don't do that, I'm not going to stand up for that. And I'm not asking you to hire me illegally, I'm asking you to do it legal. But the things you're requesting, it is not feasible to be done. You're telling me I have to go in front of the Civil Service Commission that we don't have, because you guys haven't fulfilled your duties as a County Commission and appointed somebody to the Civil Service.
Right now, we have two members of the Civil Service Commission. We haven't received the resignation of one until we receive that in writing.
Jeff Hughes advised he resigned in September of last year.
I'm sorry?
Jeff Hughes advised he sent a letter of resignation in September of last year.
We have not seen that. I heard about that, and we have looked for it and have found that.
Can I speak? When I spoke to Mr. Hughes to try to get this together, so we could go through the, you know, the right way to do it with the Civil Service Committee, he advised me that he submitted a letter in September that he didn't want anything to do with this, because he didn't feel that he was, you know, he was legal to do it, because he had resigned. So therefore, that put me with nobody on the Civil Service Committee to...well, other than John, but we got a letter from John, but it has to be at least two people, and so we don't have one at this point.
Well, I think part of the things brought to you in the letter that I sent you for that Mr. Gaypart was concerned about was that he felt that the meeting had to be posted, it had to be an open meeting, you had to keep minutes of the meeting, and any decisions made by the Civil Service Commission at that time. And you could have that meeting with two members, and I'm not saying you were on it before, you could have a meeting...
You could have it with two members, but in this case, it doesn't have...it's not a hearing, so it does...it's not necessarily open to the public. You would have to keep minutes, and those would have to stay on file of any decisions.
I'm just going for what the prosecutor said.
Right.
You know, so I mean, that's...I don't, you know, and I'm not...I'm not, you know...
You could do it with two people, but Jeff Hughes is...he called me at home the other night, and he too told me that he...he sent a letter of resignation months ago.
What he told me, when I...
I spoke to him today, and he said he thought he did, and I said I have never received it.
That's what he told me, and I talked to him Tuesday night. He said...
I wasn't...
He said I was...he said it was September, I think it was. He said, "I was going to send it." I said, "What did you do to it?" And he said, "I don't remember if I did it." And I had Mary look for that letter, and she couldn't find it. So I think it's, you know, would be...because I told him that I would get that letter and use that as a basis to make sure we were moving in front of the question, if it hadn't been done. And...but he basically said, "I'm sure I did," but he said, "I may have not." So that's...that was the last one I talked to Mr. Hughes. That was the last that I heard. And like I say, until we receive written resignation from him, the Commission can't act.
Right, people have said they've resigned before, and other boards, and I don't act on it until I get some authority.
Exactly, exactly. And we've done that historically.
What about Mr. Baker? You know, he...did he resign from the board when he took off, when he got sworn in?
I don't know.
Actually automatically excluded him from...
Yeah, he would have been...it would coincide if he would have to...
Yeah, sure. So I don't think he submitted something until he was under the understanding that he...
Yeah. Once he was hired, he would have gone.
If that's the case, that would seem improper to me.
Right, right.
Because you basically have that board appoint themselves.
Exactly.
So I...that doesn't sound right to me. I'm not an attorney, but I mean, to me, I wouldn't like that to happen, you know? It would be like one of us, you know, if we advertised for a job, we looked through the applicants and said, "Well, none of these are good enough, but I'll take it."
Right.
You know, to me, that's the...
Now that we're breaking ice through this whole proper way to do things, you know, from now on, you have ten days to appoint. So when Mr. Baker was hired, then you had ten days from that point to appoint the Civil Service Commissioner.
Well, see, as I said, I was not present at the time. I did not deal with that at the time. And what I'm trying to do is make sure that we follow the code and do everything properly and do what we're doing. And did you have anything else, Alan?
I just want...that's what I wanted to say. I mean, we're trying our best to follow the code, but we can't follow the code whenever you guys don't make it possible to do that, because you haven't done your end of the deal. And like I said, I'm not here looking for a lawsuit.
Well, just like, Alan, I've got to disagree with that, because we still have two members on this. As officially, we still have two members on it.
You have two members, but state law requires you to have three individuals.
Well, and we can do that. I think that's what we need to do, is get, you know, get that fully constituted, especially if Mr. Hughes has resigned. We need a functioning for the Civil Service.
They do. Yeah, and he's also...he will not take part in a meeting. Like, he won't...he won't take part in this. So, you know, in that case, he's pretty much absent. I mean, he's going against state code, if he is working, by not taking part in doing his duties, which is what he was...he was put there to do.
Well, and one of his concerns, with after talking with Rex Parks and some of the other people, I guess, I don't know if you were involved, right?
Yeah, I was involved.
He mentioned Rex, too. But he was telling me, he was concerned because he felt it needed to be in a meeting, and he didn't want to violate code. I think he said he told you all that, too. And so I don't...and once we get his resignation, written resignation, we'll accept that, we're going to go ahead and advertise to reconstitute the board and things of that nature. That's what...that's how we have to do it. We can't just because somebody says they've done this or don't have not done this, you know, sometimes they forget. This, everything we do really has to be on paper. And that way, if we have to reference it in the future, we can.
So he, when he opted, he just, he just elected to just resign instead of, you know, having the meeting? Well, because the reason he didn't want to do it is because he was under the impression that he did resign, so he didn't want to be doing anything against him legally. What I understand...
And I appreciate that, like, and that's why, that's why I told him, first thing I would do is get hold of Mary and have her look for that resignation letter. And that way, we'd know that we could not find one. And then, you know, basically, in talking with him, he wasn't sure when he told me that he sent that, it was his intention to do it, but I'm not sure that he knew that he did send it or didn't. And we don't have any record of it, so...
Well, so basically, what I'm saying at this point, we had him on the agenda, but there's no possible way that I could, I could get through the Civil Service, you know, Commission to get him instead of because we don't have one.
Well, I kind of wondered when you wanted me to go ahead and put his hiring on the record, that that may have been the reason.
That was the reasoning why, is when I talked to Jeff, we were going to have a meeting, we were going, they were going to move the motion, then you guys and I would have known whether or not they wanted to hire him or what, or not hire him. But at this point, I guess, in the middle of hiring or not hiring, he just opted out and resigned, so...
Let me shed just a little bit of light. The Civil Service Commission is not as much in a reinstatement as an emergency hire or a new hire. It's basically up to the sheriff and the co-employer, the county commission, to reinstate somebody if he's had the medical exam. He has to have a medical exam.
Well, it says he has to have a non-competitive exam also.
No, not for reinstatement.
Well, I, I don't know, I read the code, and I don't have it in front of me, but that's what I understand.
I thought they said that the Civil Service Commission reinstated, not us. Is that why you not did, that he just sent the office?
No, what I'm saying is that he doesn't have to go, the Civil Service doesn't have to recommend a list. For instance, Alan was probably on the February 2014 test. And once Feb, whatever that date of February was passes, that list is no longer good. So you, one might think that Alan is no longer eligible unless he tests again, but a reinstatement, he can be reinstated within two years of his resignation, as long as he wasn't fired or under investigation for, you know, illegal felonies or whatever. So the, the Civil Service Commission isn't as involved as much. A letter stating that they're okay with the reinstatement plus the medical exam will be fine, but we're infringing on time, because there is a time limit, when there's not a Civil Service Commission to get together to have a meeting to write that letter up. I guess my view is, and maybe you can answer this, is the county safer without Alan as a deputy, or is it less safe with Alan as a deputy? Because we're, we're running out of time, I mean, he's running out of time.
Well, I think one thing when we talk about safety, we have to realize we have fourteen state police in this county.
But we have an open, open spot on the sheriff's office.
Well, I know, but I mean, we were talking about safety, when we bring up issues of safety, you know, we want to look at, you know, all, all, all...
So one more deputy wouldn't make it a little safer.
I don't, I'm not that way.
I mean, I'm sitting back listening to this. So just to try to get all this straight, that's why I'm just trying to get all this straight. We have, currently, we haven't received a resignation from Jeff Hughes.
No.
All right, and we have another Johnson, right? So there's two people that could serve on the Civil Service Board, right? That we know, right? That's, I mean...
But Jeff will refuse a meeting. He refuses to take part.
Right, but what I'm saying is, but that's because he doesn't know whether he sent a letter. You know, I mean, you understand what I'm saying, but...
And he did not refuse the meeting when I talked to him, so I want to make sure that...
But what I'm saying is, that's, that's two people that we have.
But if there were three, the third one might agree to a meeting.
Right, that's fine, but what I'm saying is, is that as far as the county, I mean, you know, as far as the county commission's concerned, there's two active people, you know, and that's what, that's what you know. Until you receive a resignation, that's the way things proceed, all right? And, you know, of course, ten days, and that's, we may want to write that down in case something happens, and maybe we'll write it down on the desk, so that you know. Now, in ten days, you need to make sure we do this. But, um, I, I'm just trying to get this, and I think one of the things, the problem here is just the communication. You know, that, I mean, that's what it seems like to me, and I think that's what the problem is. You know, it's, it's a level of communication, you have an outgoing sheriff, you have a new incoming sheriff, and is, is there anything wrong with maybe sitting down and talking about what we need?
Absolutely not.
I mean, you know, you know, is, you know, because as of right now, I'm hearing about Jeff Hughes not wanting to be on this right now.
If you call it, I'll be there.
Yeah, you understand what I'm saying, so I mean, like, how, how is anybody supposed to know without being told? And then being told in a meeting, "Well, we don't have this, and we don't have that." You know, so I think maybe, maybe what needs to happen is, is maybe to sit down and say, "Hey, listen, we, we need to make sure to take care of this," and that's one of the things with even the old sheriff, that I would depend on, is somebody saying, "Hey, listen, this is what we need to do, because you're going to be familiar with your code."
That's right.
Whereas I'm not going to be as familiar with your code.
Exactly.
And I mean, that's why the communication is so important. And if not, we're going to be standing, sitting in a meeting, trying to figure out, did this guy send in a, this guy sent in a form, or did he not, or this, or that?
And this is the same, this is the same communication with me, is that I, you know, I had no, no idea, you know, until I talked, until I started looking up and seeing who's on the board, because I am an incoming sheriff, I don't know those things, you know, it's as present.
I would recommend that the commission maybe work on communication a little bit, because if they knew some stuff, you didn't.
Gary and I, we, we, I think we have a good...
Well, I mean, amongst the three of you.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I agree, that's why I'm saying, the others really have, because he, he would ask, "Who's on the board?" And I'd get those things for him and stuff, and, and, you know, he brought some other things to my attention directly, took care of it, brought to my attention, so I feel real good that Gary and I...
Absolutely, we have a good communication.
So we, we... I can see your point, too.
We, as the county, can, can we be assured that a decision on Mr. Ashworth will come within the next, uh...
I think we'll have a decision tonight.
Couple meetings? What's that?
I think we'll have a decision tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do, KK, I understand, I mean, you know, we'll, we have a sit-down or, you know, whatever it takes, as, as you all as a whole and me, because we are totally for it, but...
Well, I mean, I just live right down right here.
Yeah, I got a real...
I mean, you get, if you're saying, like, if you, if you need to, if you need to speak, like, if there's something going on that, you know, that I'm not aware of, I mean, that's all it is, stop in, or, or, you know, or...
Give you a phone call?
Yeah, a phone call to say, "Hey, listen, there's something..."
Maybe you can give your, your number, and I'll give you the...
Well, I mean, that's, that's the whole idea, I mean, that's the thing, I mean, you know, you have to be able, you have to know, I mean, it's not like being able to be a mind reader to know what's...
Well, nobody expects you to be a mind reader, it's...
Well, but I...
I'm not, I'm not implementing that whatsoever.
But that's what I'm, but that's what I'm trying to say, is like, you know, you don't know anything about Jeff Hughes, Jeff Hughes until what, five minutes ago?
But you being as, can I speak?
Ah, it's up to him.
You being as a part of the commission department?
Did you identify yourself to the record?
Uh, you can speak. I cannot speak, everyone.
Okay.
I'd like to speak, I'm signed in.
Oh, well, are you going to talk about the same subject we're talking about now?
Yes, it's pretty much the same subject.
And your name, ma'am?
My name is Kim Contraill, I'm a resident of Samarco. And I'm actually, I was here to speak about law enforcement slash humane officer. I represent the West Virginia Horse Network, and I've done work here in the county in the past. And, but as a resident and someone who's concerned about safety, and I know that people on our end of the county are fed up with the thieving, the drugs, all this stuff going on, and I'm just sitting here thinking, okay, so all of this right here, if we need deputies, can you tell me, if, if all of our deputies quit today, how long would it take you to hire deputies? And how would that process work? I'm, I'm thinking, I'm like, well, I mean, are we going to go three, four months without deputies? How's that going, how's that going to work? I mean...
Well, ma'am, and I, I know, I know some of the things you're concerned about with that, which, and I can understand that you would bring that up in this discussion or having, but, you know, it's just like the sheriff, when he came in the last meeting, we went ahead and okayed his chief deputy, we went ahead and okayed the process server. When we can, we will.
So it can be done, I mean...
Well, well, but now, we're talking about different things, a chief deputy doesn't have, is not in the civil service, that's not a civil service position. And so any other deputy would be. So they, they are required by the civil, by the law, the code, to go through a competitive exam, the top three, I think, are picked, you may know more about this, Gary. And then, you know, the sheriff makes recommendations to ensure that we go ahead with it usually.
And it's the same as the process server, he's not, he's not covered under the Civil Service who...
So really, what he asked Gary the last time to do, and, and the communications I've had with him since the commission met the last time, as instructed by the prosecutor in the letter I was sending, said, "We need this information from civil service before we can act on it, before I let the commission act on it."
And in Perry, with the communication from whoever side it may be, it was tough for me to find who was in that Civil Service, you know, committee, and then once I did find it, one opted, said that he had resigned, and, you know, and I will river that with that.
So if, if we didn't have any deputies today that were covered under civil service, say we had our process server, our sheriff, and our chief deputy that are, are not under civil service, and that's all we had, okay, and we had to hire, how, I mean, how would you handle that process, and how long would that take?
I, I don't really know what the code says about that situation where you don't have anybody. I do know at one time, I think, uh, when, I think we may have only three or four deputies when Bowman and those guys were here, is all we had at that time.
I'm, I'm just wondering, too, and I don't know if you all know, or maybe the sheriff can, based on population, I don't even know what Lincoln County's population is, based on population, how many, how many deputies and law enforcement are we supposed to have?
There's, there's not, as far as I know, there's not a number.
Number of deputies, there's law enforcement, we don't know.
I've got some nuts on.
I don't, I can't answer that.
I, I am collecting, I will tell you all this, I am collecting numbers from other counties, as far as how many deputies got for populations and things, and we're looking at all of that. Because one of the things, you heard the discussion about the possible suit against the drug counties, one of the things I wanted to do with that money was to make sure that we had law enforcement up to speed with whatever the other counties had. But we're in a, we're going to talk about this here in a little bit, as far as the budget, and you're going to see what kind of, more of an idea of what kind of financial situation we're in, which I, you know, I've not stayed, except when I've become president, I kind of started looking at these numbers and things like that. And I want to go over some of them, we're going to have the assessor talk about some about our decrease in revenues from taxations and things like that. So all those things, we're trying to, it's going to, it's a lot worse than we all think, and I hate to say it that way, but I think that's, we all got to be fair with each other, and we all got to be open with each other. And I'm trying to tell everyone here who we're at financially, and that's what I'm going to try to bring people up to speed on tonight. And we, the commission is going to make some decisions tonight about how we're going to handle that. And it's going to require, uh, different things, but I wanted to be able to show you the numbers. But now, in, to be proactive about it, I'm also looking at what the other counties have done as far as law enforcement, I'm also looking at how many people they have hired, how many they've had to lay off, and all those things, because I want us to get the best possible, uh, solution for this, and that, and, and nobody, nobody can say having more law enforcement's bad, because it's not, but it's a question of whether we can afford more law enforcement.
Can you cut law enforcement from the budget without cutting other things first?
We're going to cut, that's one of the things I want to bring up a little later, we're, we're cutting every apartment that, that I know of, not just law enforcement.
I will say this, and this has been several years back. My husband was working out of state at one time, and it was myself and my girls, so we put in a security alarm. My husband happened to be in that weekend, and we were in Charleston, we got a phone call from our security alarm saying that the alarm had been triggered, and, you know, I'm, "Do, do you want me to call, do you want us to call law enforcement?" "Yes, I do." So we're like busting the ga, getting home, trying to figure out what's going on, and I get a call back from my security alarm company that says, "Well, we can't get anyone to respond to the call." And I'm like, "What do you mean?" They, they told us that it was going to be two hours before they could respond, they only had one deputy on call, and he was on the other side of the county. And I'm thinking, two hours to respond? Now, granted, I was, my first question was, um, state police? Well, state police were having a DUI check, so I don't know why they couldn't bear, you know, spare anyone to respond to that. But the fact that it was going to be two hours to, to wait for someone to respond to that, and, and that was four years ago, that was, that was before all of these budget cuts and everything, and, and all, you know, I know the money was starting to go down, but it seems like to me that we're just going backwards.
I understand, and there's no doubt, I can tell you, when you look at the, our, our numbers now, we've been going back ever since we lost Cole Severance, right? I mean, Gary's going to go over some numbers as far as what we were getting in Cole Severance and what we're getting now. Guys want to go over some things as far as how we're being impacted, as far as how much taxes are being paid, and some things of that nature. And once we go through that, I think you'll see a little bit more about where I'm coming from on what we can and can't afford. I spoke informally to six of the state police already, and, and asked them about the impact they felt it would be if we did, and I took this on myself, I haven't talked to the other commissioners or anything. And it concerned them, but they said, you know, "We have, we have twelve officers and two sergeants here." And, um, and I asked them, I said, "Well, you know, we're as, how, how does this..." Of course, they weren't, they didn't come up with anything, "We can't do it," or, you know, things like that. But I had made them aware that, you know, that we're, we're in financial dire straits here, and, um, that cuts may be coming forth, and, and I, I asked them if, if they felt that they had more information for me to get in touch with me and things, but it was basically over dinner, they were over at the place I was eating, and I walked over and said, you know, "This might be what we have to do, you know, how do you feel this would be if I commute?" I didn't, don't think either one of them were the sergeants, and they would probably know more about things like that, I don't know, but I did mention it to them and things of that nature. But there's no doubt we need more law enforcement, whether it be state police or deputy sheriffs, it's a matter of whether we can afford it.
I want to step to the bathroom, if you're locked in the room, I'm big locked in.
Hold that far.
Yeah, I'm a York.
Did you have anything else you want to say?
Well, I'm signed in to speak about law enforcement and humane officer. I've talked to some of you in, in the, uh, your offices earlier about an issue that has come up with some vicious dog attacks in the Samarco area, and the feeling is, well, everybody has different feelings as to whether they belong, the dogs belong to someone, or they're feral dogs. I lean toward the latter, I do honestly think that they are feral dogs. I really encourage, um, the commission to take a look at, um, you know, working with an animal control officer, just simply for the fact of, um, there are things that can be done, I, you don't have to take every animal in that you come across, uh, but there are things that can be done. If, if this, if we had had an animal control officer, uh, this situation might not be where it's at, that these animals that appear to have possibly been dropped, would have been taken care of at an earlier date in time, and we wouldn't have the issues that were having. We have people that are afraid to let their kids go outside. These animals have brought down three donkeys, five goats, a deer, and a dog, and those are just the ones we know about. And I really can, you know, I really encourage the commission to take a look at that, and if, if it's handled through the sheriff's department, to give him, you know, the resources, you know, to make something like that happen. If, if nothing else, then, I know we have in the past, with the previous sheriff's office, we actually were able to rescue two horses, which should have been three. The deputy here helped, assisted us on that, and the third one had already passed away. So those horses were able to find homes, it didn't cost the county commission, it didn't cost the county, Lincoln County a dime. So we can look out, um, in critical situations like that, to rescue such as ourselves, the West Virginia Horse Network, there's also the Heart of Phoenix, uh, and various, uh, other rescues like Mark, which was responsible for taking, some, some of you may know that remember the dog Durango, or Yaki, however you remember it by, they were responsible for taking in that animal. I think Lincoln County doesn't need the negative publicity. I, I was told that one of the news stations was going to carry, uh, a, a story this evening on the dog attacks, uh, they were supposed to...
DNR been informed of this?
The, someone has talked to the DNR, um, I mean, it's just one of those things, everybody's talked to somebody, and, uh, you know, something's going to have to be done because it is a, it's a safety situation, you're, we're afraid, well, not only for our livestock, but for our kids, too, so...
We, we used to have a human officer. The reason we created that, was that the cost of the expense of taking them down and things, and...
Yeah, it's about a fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars a quarter expense at the animal shelter to have that...
I know, we used to do this before, that's what I was checking, I thought it was, you know, sixty thousand dollars a year to pay the animal shelter. And I think that was, you know, used in the decision not to continue that.
Right.
But this commission, I, we will...
But I think they can take someone like an emergency, and then you took some insects, yeah? Not the cattle, though, you took Charleston?
No, no, I took a dog, but before I took the dog, I had arranged with someone else, someone that lived in the county.
They'll charge, if you take a dog, we'll charge.
Well, we ran into this once.
If we take a dog, I don't know about people, individuals.
We ran into this once.
They do have a per animal charge.
Yeah, and you can just, we can't pay fifteen thousand dollars a quarter.
Yeah, we, I mean, I can, I think you underestimate the animal community. I think you underestimate if they're given the chance to step forward and, and really become a voice in the county, I think, I think they will. But as long as we keep looking for excuses why we're not going to do something, nobody's going to stop you.
We can pay, the DNR, I think, can take them, but if we, like, I think, I know what you're talking about and I think it's an emergency in almost situation because somebody's...
Yeah, I mean, this situation with the wild dogs, I think is an emergency situation. I think it's going to be something where the DNR is going to have to step in and bait them into life trials.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, this might be, it sounds like you got a problem with a, with a, whatever you want to call them, a herd of them or a group of, a pack of them.
But, but I'm also talking about in the future. I mean, if we had a situation, if, if, if we don't look for excuses not to do something, if, if we find ways to do something, I think the people will step up and, you know, if the deputy comes up with a dog that, you know, obviously needs a home or, you know, I, I think we could probably count on some people to step up and do the thing and take care of the dog, either foster it, get it, you know, care, get it to a rescue. Honestly, I don't think it's outlandish for a rescue to be started in the county by individuals.
I think what bothers me a little bit is these feral dogs and I think they're crossbreeding with the coyotes, you get those coyotes and things like that. And those, you're not going to be able to keep those, you know what I mean?
No, 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 I'm not referring to...
And I think some of this, but here's what I would suggest. I will go ahead and instruct Mary to contact the shelters, see what they would charge us to do those type things. In the meantime, I'll talk with the sheriff and see if the, if we've got someone available at the time if they can handle that. I think also the commission needs to send the DNR letter and tell them the concerns of the residents over there and we'd like to ask them what they could do to help us help them, okay?
Can I speak on this?
Sure.
Zach Sowers on the process server. I would more, you know, be glad to be the humane officer and the process server and take care of that. I mean, if anything, when I worked at 911, we would get 10 calls a week on people not feeding their dogs, somebody shot my dog, you know, something like that, so, you know. And then we just tell them, "Well, we can't do nothing about it because we don't have a humane officer." So, because DNR, usually we got 20 calls a day.
Yes, definitely.
If we had a humane officer though and, and we learned how to network with the rescues, I mean, it, it's, you know, it's a win-win for the county because, I mean, maybe we won't be able to solve every stray dog, maybe we won't take care of every situation, but there's one more that's gone out there reproducing and causing an even bigger problem.
When that pack of pit bulls kills a little kid, it sounds like it's worth sixty thousand dollars if that would happen.
Exactly. And, and that's probably...
Well, this is my problem with that, okay, is that the DNR is already supposed to be taken care of, as far as I know, okay? I mean, that's part of their job.
Wild animals are part of the job, domesticated animals aren't.
Well, if you're talking about, nobody having an owner, these dogs, we don't know who their owners are, and when you get a dog out and you don't know whose owners are, it's wild, as far as I'm concerned, you know what I mean?
That's good, I mean, I agree with you completely. These dogs, whenever they're caught, they need to be euthanized, they're, they're not salvageable. But I, I'm just saying in the future, I mean, maybe a year ago, we could have stopped this from happening if we had a humane officer and there had been a report of some stray animals around before they, you know, and that they were taking care of them. I may not be here standing telling you about livestock and wildlife.
I know, my way, my way, we lose all kinds of small dogs to other wild animals, whether it be coyotes or dogs, ferals or whatever. And I do appreciate what you're saying and we will take these steps that I told you about. We'll contact the DNR, we'll also look into the expense of shelter, go into one of these places, maybe working out some kind of a thing. But, but, once we go through our budget, we have to make decisions based upon a lot of different things and I do think that's important. But I also would like to make sure if it's under the DNR's, under their authority to do that, then I think the commission would encourage them to go ahead and do that till we can put something in place.
Yes, but I would again, like to recommend that with a humane officer, the networking with the rescue groups going forward can stop these problems. So, I mean, I'm not asking you to put up a bunch of money, I'm asking you to look at ways where the community can be part of the solution at no cost to the county.
I mean, even if we just write them tickets, that's bringing in money to the county for not feeding the dog, you know what I'm saying? I mean, some of those tickets are up to fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I don't know how many, we ever get any written.
The state, I think state gets it.
Yeah, that's what I think, there's a lot of these things that we really need to look into and, you know, refresh my memory on how they're doing, but I thought the state gets that money, so we'd have to have a situation where we can recruit some of your costs and things like that. But now, we will address it. I mean, you know, I, I don't know that it would be the answer you would want, but we will address it and we're not looking for excuses not to do it. Because I know how, you know, I take care of dog bites all the time and I know how devastating it can be to some of these young kids, including death. But it needs to be, as you say, from the citizens in, the law enforcement, but I also feel the DNR needs to have a much better, a much bigger role in it than what they have.
But from an animal rescue outlet too, you know, there are a lot of salvageable dogs out there and, you know, rather than them staying on the road and leading miserable life, getting hit by a car, you know, or something, they can be taken in and put out to rescues again at no cost. I mean, a rescue's not going, the only way a rescue would give a deal would be if, if animals were seized and if they were, wanted their animals back, then they, the rescue could ask for the money for the care of the animal if there was any, you know, and that would come from the person who, you know, whose animal, you know, belonged to.
They wouldn't get their animal back until they...
Right, exactly.
And that's different within COVID.
It's a, it's a safe, you know, it's a means of keeping an animal out of a bad situation. But that's what, again, like I said, I've worked with the county before, I've worked with the deputy agents over here and we had a wonderful outcome for the two horses. Unfortunately, the third one didn't make it. We ended up, last year, well, it's been over a year ago, I don't know if you all recall the horse that was loose on Route 3. Yeah, we, we traced the hills of alcohol and come away with that horse and he was no longer a threat to anybody driving up and down the road and Lincoln County didn't pay anything for that. You know, it was, it was all taken on by the rescue.
Thank you. I, I, I'm going to go out and turn you, because I want to go ahead and finish what the sheriff and Alan brought up and there's someone else, Kim Quatrell?
That's you.
That's you, okay, okay. Is there, is there any other comments you want to make, Gary? I'll come up when you, when we take on the requests that you have. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to Alan's? Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. We're all talking about feeling safer in our communities. We have crime watch in McCorville Community Center every fourth Monday. We're lucky to get five people show up. You want your community safer, join a crime watch, become part of it, take a night out, report what you see. The new sheriff has promised us that he would work with us. We want to work with him and that's one way we can all help one another in this thing we call a crime and all the break-ins and everything that's going on.
I think that's an important point because without citizens help, we're limited in what we can and how effective we can be. Next on this is, what is that? Ms. Adams.
That's me, and it's Penny.
Penny, okay.
Mine has been spelled really weird, I'm blaming my father for that. Okay, I'm Penny Adams and I'm with the West Virginia Attorney General Hackett Morrissey's office. I am, this is Phil Grant, and I met you today, you've got my card, and I know you, Sean, how are you? I just wanted to introduce myself as the Phil Grant, and I've got that long title on my business card, but basically that's what I am. I am in the Consumer Protection Division. You may see in the newspaper where I'm speaking at the Hamlin Senior Center, but we basically, I do education on scams and so forth that's going around in your county. So, if you ever hear of anything, and Sheriff, I'm speaking to you too, I'll give you one of my cards, but we like to know things that are going on so that we can educate the public since they do not get scammed. But plus also, I take in consumer complaints, you know, against businesses and so forth, but you have my card. If you ever need anything that you think I might be able to help you with, just call me and I'll be glad to help you with whatever I can.
Sure appreciate it, thanks for coming by.
No, no problem.
Next is Jerry Swanson, Day Report Center. Mr. Swanson.
Good evening. Have you ever felt that your timing is not really...
So, this, Mr. Frank?
I'm not asking for money, how's that? I'm coming to share actually some good news about our day report. We, to the J L Frye, he's our new day report officer, and Matt Becker here is my adult drug court probation officer. We just wanted to tell you some of the stuff that's going on at the day report. All the people that they're talking about, we're working with, so the reality of where we live in. You'll note there in the first thing I wrote, it said, "West Virginia is kind of known for being first in all the wrong things, overdoses and hepatitis," as Tim Chaffin mentioned earlier. We're also, on the positive, we're number one in the day report. We're the number one day report in the state. We were awarded by the Division of Criminal Justice Services, Division of Justice and Community Services, the Judge Gahn Award during the fall. There's twenty day reports around the state and we're number one. We're also the second largest and we secured the most money, state monies of any day report last year. When the state wants something done for a project piloted, they looked at our day report. They call our circuit. You know, we have that kind of relationship and we're producing that kind of product. We're doing, we're doing a good job, I want you to know that. The Hamlin site down here, as you know, the Southwest Region Day Report Centers, Lincoln, Boone, Logan, Mingo. The Hamlin site is the largest of the four sites with, they're serving 171 people right now. Actually, we just took the number one spot this week, last week? Our day report is leading a pilot project for the state at the request of the Division of Criminal Justice Services, scratch that, Justice Community Service, they changed their name, and the request of the Supreme Court. We're working to become a licensed behavioral health center so that we have bill Medicaid, which will hopefully be a huge relief to you. And I think we do come every year and we ask for some money, and I'm going to tell you that's not an expense, that's an investment. Hopefully, if we can get that Medicaid money coming, that's going to help us out and it's going to help you out. Let's see, J L told me our guys performed over fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand thirty-four hours of community service last year. That's almost the equivalent of eight full-time paid employees, you know, or minimum wage a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of work. You know, that's going to be worth something too and I think that's a big deal. There's a lot of stuff that gets done at the courthouse and all around the county from McCorville to Harps that wouldn't happen without this community service people. We have one recently get a full-time job because of these community services. We have another that may get a part-time job, I was just told this week, they're having a good experience with that person, so that's another positive. So, you see there, I listed all the community service locations around. If you notice anybody else that may need some community service, you know, contact me, contact J L if you want, if you can. Actually, I think lately Joey's truck's actually been full and we could use another site or two if you have. I know, I know we've sent people up here that, because they've had to turn away because we've just had too many here already.
And if the weather breaks, you'll have more.
We will. And we're actually working on something right now to do some, I just found this out today, to do some alternative things within the magistrates instead of jail time, maybe doing some community service hours and some services instead, which will, you know, keep people all jailed, keep jail bill down. We have, when he mentioned the 171 clients that we serve, what, the 171 clients that we have are actual, those are the ones that are receiving extensive services. Those are people that are, that are receiving more than just a drug screening. They're receiving courses such as drug screening, community service, individual therapy, group therapy, employment skills, parenting skills, Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous meetings, and all those are actually open to the public. We, yeah, we do drug testing services for probation drug court. On top of that, we also do drug screening services for the circuit court, family court, the prosecutor's office, the magistrate courts, home confinement and DHHR. So, we are serving, you know, in total, much more than 171 people and we continue to bring in new curriculum all the time that's proven nationally to work and be effective. You know, we have a drug epidemic here, not in just in our county, but in the state. And, you know, it wasn't, I told him earlier, and he knows this, it wasn't created overnight and it will not be fixed overnight. But we're making strides in the right direction and we make strides every year. One thing, we had two babies born this year from drug court or day report clients and both those babies were drug free.
That's awesome. The drug-free babies don't go away, man.
Everybody likes to hear about the drug-free. Of course, drug-free babies are expensive, not to mention...
No, drug-free ones aren't, drug-addicted ones aren't, right?
Yeah, drug-addicted babies are expensive. Actually, they're both expensive.
I think everything is important is your participants are obtained of GBD.
Yeah.
And that is, you know, and also you've got five of the clients that become first in their family to be accepted and 10 cops.
What do you think about that? That's pretty cool.
Well, we know that's the solution. Part of the solution is to do this. I mean, that, and that, to me, none of that would have happened without you. I mean, and I think if we look at, and Jerry and I have talked about this before, we have to stop the epidemic from both ends. We have to stop the usage of the drugs, we have to stop prescribing that's not appropriate and all those things. On the other end, these people that are already addicted, that are already committing crimes, we've got to make sure they have a way to, to help take care of their family themselves. Give them a reason not to collapse, give them a reason not to be that stuff. And you have, it doesn't, it doesn't happen at any one level, it has to happen at all phases. And, you know, there's things you all do, there's things as a physician that I'm working on with other physicians and things, and this is by far, I've talked to people in other counties that aren't aware of this, they say, "Well, you know, gosh, that's what you really want to do." If you talk to doctors, they tell you, "This is, this is what you need to do, you need to retrain these people, you need to give them a means to take care of themselves and their family," and then they don't fall back into that. We don't give them anything when they finish, we don't want to relapse or anything.
We often hear from the victims that crime and, and they think our program's all, they're just getting a slap on the wrist. But once they're really told, you know, if the prosecutor tells them they're going to be doing this, this and this and this every day, most of those victims even come around and say, "Yeah, that doesn't sound too bad, let's give that a shot." And if you guys haven't ever come down to the day report on the day that they're up and functioning, come down and check it out. They're busy, there's a lot going on and we're making a difference, you know? One person at a time, few people at a time.
I've been there six years and I've worked just about every position you can have there. I've seen the program go leaps and bounds from where it has came from. I remember when I first started, I was teaching a class, I was, did my best teaching a class. Every class that we teach now is taught by a bachelor's level or a master's level educated person.
Draw evidence-based programs.
Yes.
There's no run together stuff.
Does Mr. Becker do anything there with rabbit hunt?
Not really.
No, we really appreciate the job you all do and I, I find it, you know, I find it to be one of the most important things proactively we're doing. And I think it's very important, you know, for us to support that as best we can.
Appreciate that. Honestly, we didn't know you, we had this big meeting like this today.
That's good, everybody just learns.
But, you know, maybe our timing's good, maybe our timing's bad, but, you know, I know you've got some big decisions ahead of you in the coming months. And again, I would, I'm going to tell you, it's an investment inside of this, of course, I'm sure every officer here is going to be.
I guess there's a government effect.
There were, actually, the application is filled out. There's a board meeting tomorrow. I think the director's going to make a presentation tomorrow to get whatever final approval she needs to do. It scares me to death, but our director has taken it upon herself, she's a licensed psychologist, she's going to start this under her license. So, I'm like, "You're going to do what? She's going to put her license at risk, you know, should something go wrong, Michelle, to get this up and running." So, you know, we get the license in, we've been working with DHHR and, like I said, and all these other agencies. The governor's office kind of pushed this through this past year to make this happen. So, we're working on it as fast as we can and we're looking at whatever ways we can to save you money. I continue to monitor the jail bill, you know, they emailed from me a few months back, you know, I put two, six or seven thousand dollars for you. We continue to do that, so doing what I can, every penny counts.
Appreciate that. First of all, that's all we have on the public comment, discussion, concerns, possible action, reaching to, amendment, drawdown requests.
I have several things for you guys, as usual. The first thing, we have a grant agreement with, amendment from the development office. As far as I can tell, nothing changes other than just terminology, this language. So, they wanted to add a few different pieces of language to the grant in order to comply with a lot of the new stuff that they've got going, but nothing changes, nothing, no funds are going to be moved or anything like that, it's all the same.
And what is it, is that just, is it called, what is the doctor?
Grant agreement, number one.
Do I have a motion to approve the grant agreement as presented?
What's that gonna be?
All favor, I, uh...
Aye. I have two original, I'm not sure why there's a requirement.
Last line here.
Yeah. Email me all.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Tomorrow morning.
Did you see my signature on it, right?
Yeah, for sure.
And we get copies?
She did, yeah. Next, I'll have you sign a budget amendment. Basically, what's happening with the budget amendment is we had the ADA assessment done for the commission, which just is in compliance with the section 504 ADA compliance, saying that people could come to the meetings and it's accessible to everybody. In order to do that, we have to pull money out of construction and put it in as a line item for ADA, so that way we can pay Mountain State Centers for, for assisted living. Also, we've got an engineering invoice from September that we need to pay. That's sixty thousand dollars. We're drawing that out of construction, and this is all small cities, and putting it into an engineering line item. So the engineer will draw all the rest from R U S upon loan closing, but that hasn't happened yet. So I talked to Rick, and he's not going to do any more invoices, so we don't have to put it through the small cities budget and make any more corrections. We can take it out of R U S, but this is just for this invoice for September that hasn't been slapped out yet.
So I have a motion to approve the budget revision as presented, and give me permission to sign.
I'll say aye.
Awesome. Oh, yes?
And finally, we have a rather large drawdown. We got hung up with drawdown number two. It was sent back to us because the development office is now requiring us to include an additional item within the invoices for indirect costs. So that got bumped back to us, so this is going to be a heftier drawdown just because the last drawdown, number two, was bumped back to us, so none of it was paid. So we have to include it on this one. So we have four invoices for region two in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents for admin. We have eight invoices from Griffith and Associates for accounting in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents. One invoice for floor law offices in the amount of three thousand ten dollars for legal. One invoice for Mountain State Centers for Assisted Living for five hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents. And finally, one invoice for, for E L Robinson in the amount of sixty thousand, which totals to one hundred and one thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Like, say that totally, one oh one, what?
Four hundred forty-nine and-
Oh, one forty-nine.
Forty cents.
Okay.
And this is coming out of the grant for small cities?
Yeah, just small cities, that's all we're doing right now until the R U S one closes.
So region two's getting eighty-eight thousand, is that right?
No.
Oh.
Region two's only getting twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
For now. Yeah, and that's, that's the invoices all the way up from, what is it, I think?
October, this is-
Yeah, okay.
Is this drawn on two or?
This is revised number two.
Revised two.
And this lower mud river, right?
Yes, lower mud river.
Okay.
We want to always include in our, in our record what these-
Okay, I can announce that from now on. Also, I had you as on the covert letter as president, so I had to write your name, so I'll just have you initial beside the correction, so that way, yeah.
That's okay. Something down there. I told you.
Okay, that's all right. We need, I need a motion to go ahead and approve the drawdown request as presented, and give me authorization to sign. So we, all favor say aye?
Aye. As an update, you guys were concerned about when we're going to bid. We're working on D S C work, so it should be going to bid around May or June, is what Rick said. I know, I was kind of hoping it'd be sooner, but apparently the D S C work and some of the land is having, is giving some issues there. But lower mud river two, we've been working on the initiation for that. I worked on that personally, so that's all in and going through the H I J D C council, so.
And you know Commissioner Harless is going to serve on your board announcement, yeah?
I told him. Her name, she called and asked if we had any change, and I said, no, not have the-
Is it a net?
A net, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I've been out of the office, honestly, so this is probably my-
B B B in the board, but not with the press.
Gotcha. We have a lot of A R C applications going in, so I had to, I had to do this like a week ago, and then I've been on the road and things, so it's, it's a, it's a miss site, but-
We meet again, just call here and let Mary know.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else?
Um, no, that's all unless you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next, I've had a put on agenda budget update. I'm going to start with Sessor, Guy, you want to speak this?
The Sessors office, we're working on our assessed values for the seventeen eighteen here. And we have to have those values in by February first to the State Tax Department. So last week, we ran a preliminary, preliminary report to see what our values are right now. And the values are lower than what I expected, so I wanted to bring it to the attention of the commission. Granted, this is preliminary, but it's not going to change drastically from what we've got right now. In class two values, class two is residential property, it'd be residential homes. Last year, our value was two hundred forty-two million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty. This year is two hundred forty-five million, twenty-three thousand. Class two is up a little over two million. That value's going to stay about where it's at. Class three value, which is double the tax rate as class two value. Last year, our value was eighty-three thousand, six hundred seven thousand, four hundred and ninety. This year-
So it's eighty-three million?
Eighty-three million, six hundred seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
What was that? My heart stopped.
This year, on our preliminary report, our class three value is seventy-two million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. That's a decrease of ten million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. And I was kind of surprised by that number, so we, we started searching to see why that value was so much lower than it was last year. Two coal companies went out of business, and their coal values, that was, one of them last year, their coal value was twelve million and like five hundred thousand. This year, their coal value is one million, four hundred thousand. So, and the other company was, I think it was ten million last year, it's down to four million, five hundred and some thousand. And I asked the Tax Department why that is, and it's because that mine is now out of, what was ten thousand an acre is now down to eight hundred dollars an acre, as far as coal values. That value, that value's not going to change. That, that ten thousand seven hundred is going to be the decrease that it's going to be. So right there, we're down ten million in class three property. Personal property, which is vehicles, trailers, stuff like that, it's up twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars. That's not going to change any at all. Class three personal property, last year, the values was, well, one hundred and six million, six hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Can you explain there, like, what class three personal property is?
Class three is vehicles, it's royalty for oil and gas, it's commercial, commercial businesses, their inventory and stuff like that, is class three personal property. Okay, the, the class three values on personal property this year is eighty-five million, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. That's a difference of twenty-one million, six hundred four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the minus. This number, I think this number will, will be different when we, when we submit our final assessed values. I don't know how much different yet, because there's still some oil and gas royalties that hasn't, hasn't been loaded. So that's a total of, in, in class three property, of thirty-two million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven, that we have less for seventeen eighteen than we did for sixteen seventeen.
And again, class three is doubled.
Yeah, it's double the tax rate of class two. Class two is residential property, it's taxed at a lower rate than commercial rental, so... And if you do the numbers, if you multiply the thirty-two million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven by the tax rate, for just the county's part, that would be a decrease of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, rounded to two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Again, that twenty-one million, I think it will come up some, but I don't know. We have to have this submitted by February first, so within the next week, we can have the final numbers. Now, the public utility report is not, that's not sent in with this assessed value that we submit to the State Tax Department. I don't have that number yet. I don't know whether it's going to be higher or lower, it could, it could go either way. The only reference I have in, in two thousand fifteen, the public utility report was eighty-three million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four. Two thousand sixteen, it was eighty-five million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. So it's a difference of about two million to the increase in sixteen, but we don't know yet whether that's going to increase or decrease, because we don't do anything with the public utility report. That's done by the Board of Public Works. And these coal values, and the main part of this twenty-one million in personal property is oil and gas royalty. We have no control over that, all that's done by the State Tax Department.
So, I know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But, you know, I just wanted to make you aware, seventeen eighteen-
You said class three's down two hundred and-
Class three's down thirty-two million.
Thirty-two million.
Right now, preliminary.
How about, if you, if you, do you have a number as far as all the classes, as far as how much the praise or assessed value or whatever's went down? If you add it all together, class two, class three?
Class two's went up two million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, and about one hundred and fifty. And personal property has went up like twenty-seven thousand and seven hundred and thirty dollars.
So we're still about thirty-one million, thirty-one million.
No. The thirty-two million is just the class three that's-
That's just class three.
That's all that is.
That's, that's the real estate class three and the personal property class three. So, like I say, this is preliminary, but I want to make you aware that I don't see these numbers going up drastically to what we were last year.
So this probably means the county's going to drop the tax class.
I would say we'll drop to a class six county, personally, class five.
You're basically figuring we're going to lose about two hundred and forty thousand in taxes?
Yeah, that would be the worst-case scenario. You know, I don't, like I say, this is preliminary, I think some of them will change, but it's not going to be a drastic, a drastic change in what we got now. And it's, and it's coal-related, the ten million and, and gas is, because we do everything that we can control in our office, and that's the only thing we can find that is, that's decreased.
You all have any questions?
No, Mary's all right.
We really appreciate you doing that to everybody as a team.
And like I say, I will, we will, this has to be submitted to the Tax Department by February first, so we should have the total numbers by then.
Thank you, Guy. Thanks, Guy. I really wish it went the other way, but it didn't. Also, I asked Mary to put the numbers that I was talking to you about.
Hi.
Okay. Tell-
Do you want to?
You want?
She's got the call set.
Yeah, what I asked Mary to do is get us some numbers so we could compare our revenues from previous years to this year and things of that nature. You know, our main big loss over losing assessed first value of these places would be our coal severance, and you want to go through those numbers?
Well, I've got, for January of sixteen, we received sixty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars just for that one paid. And January seventeen, we received fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. And then on the tax part, that would add to Guy's two hundred and forty thousand decrease, from July first to December thirty-first of sixteen, we are down two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, so we're midway through, so that is-
So six months down to sixty, after what it was prior?
Correct. So if we, I mean, even if you don't double, if you save three fifty, added to Guy's two forty, it's not going to let it down.
Do you have any other numbers you want to do?
Well, I have a jail.
Yeah, let's, let's talk to them.
Okay. Since November of fifteen, we have been paying a payment to the jail. We haven't been paying the entire jail bill, we've paid twenty thousand dollars, and then we have not-
And what, what is the month of jail bill bound?
Forty, it runs forty-eight to forty-nine thousand almost always, until summer months, and then it picks up maybe to sixty, but usually forty-eight to forty-nine thousand. So we have paid twenty thousand up until August of sixteen. We haven't made a payment since August, and we are a total of five hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents behind on the jail bill. And we have forty-eight thousand roughly in coal.
And that's what we usually, as best I remember, we made our jail bill payments out of coal severance.
We made all jail bill payments out. The last one that we, Miss B B, worked on, we pulled, I pulled like five thousand from magistrate fees and five thousand from here, could just get a twenty thousand dollar payment. How was general counting from different places? Because, well, yeah, we also, people might, when we say the forty-eight thousand, we left there, but we still have to, we already have budget of the W E extension, we have to pay for the day, the day report that we entered into contract with them, and then we've done the pay-plate dues pay. So that money is, and that's more than forty-eight thousand.
But as far as our tax collections, now, now, what we get, we're down two hundred and sixty thousand over the last six months.
Six months, yeah.
So the way I look at it, I mean, I just look at kind of the numbers that Guy had and this, we're behind a little over a million dollars, or really behind a little over a million, so. And I wanted to get those numbers so that all of us would know where we're at with this thing. I don't, you know, I don't know, without some other dedicated source of funding from the state as far as our jail bills, unless something would happen like possibly winning a suit against the drug companies and have money to use for that, if we continue on our current course, we would be down a million dollars on our jail bill, even if we paid what we pretty much could. And, and the others, the decrease in tax revenue, two hundred and forty thousand, and then we've lost two hundred and six, or haven't collected two hundred and sixty thousand of what we did last year and stuff.
Correct.
You know, I don't, you know, I'll be the first to say, I, I don't know what the answer to that is, I don't know what the solution to that is. I think we have to look at it from different things. One, we have, we will have to make cuts. And some of the, I know when Commissioner Harless was president, she talked with some of the, the other office holders, and what I am going to do tonight is, you know, in light of the financial situation we're in, I'm going to ask the commission to act on a few different things. One is, I would like the commission to act on imposing a hiring freeze and, and have the, and ask the elected officials not to hire, unless it's, you know, we get into a situation where we feel that it's necessary for public safety or whatever to do that. But, you know, the, and I think that would require, I would like a, a motion, if it be the will of the commission, to go ahead and enact a hiring freeze until these numbers were improved, or do we feel like that we can actually pay these people that we're hiring? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. I will talk with each individual elected official and go over them, with them what I understand. I will talk with each individual election official and go over them, with them what I understand you may have to do. We're still kind of formulating what we have to do. I think no matter what we do in cuts, though, it's not going to be enough. I mean, it's just a matter of, we have to operate the government of this county. And, but we're going to have to do it as financially, fiscally responsible as we can. And that's, when we come down to particular things, the only thing we can do is do what we can do. And seek ways of getting, you know, I've already been working with some of the legislators on trying to get some bill passed that would designate funding for our jail system, because we can't afford, you know, we can't afford four-eight to sixty thousand dollars a month, we just can't do it. There's a lot of other counties in this boat too, not just us. But the Supreme Court, at least some of them are in the Supreme Court, I've heard their comments about it, was, you know, it's our bill, we need to do something with it. But they, you know, they don't, they're the ones that put the jail system together and decided on this and that, and what it costs us and things of that nature. I've talked to Mr. Swanson about trying to get people out of jail and things like that, and I think he's working on that. Assistant prosecutors working with the judge on trying to get people out of jail when they, when they can be out safely. But I do think that this has to be, this was something that we were looking at cuts coming about in the new fiscal year and things like that. But I think really, if you're looking at our financial situation now, it doesn't really need to wait. I mean, somewhere you've got to stop the wind, and we need to at least slow it down as best we can.
I want to say, I mean, we knew that it was going to be bad, I've said that, it was looking like it was going to be worse than what we thought. And I did, as people have left, in Daryl's office, the sheriff clerk, Guy, we have just kind of, you know, I've asked them, please don't ask us to fill these, because we probably will be able to, and nobody has, you know, done that. So we, and, you know, we're this much down with our four or five positions that we had even projected that we could. You know, and it's hard for even elected officials sometimes to understand. When we do a budget in March for the next fiscal year, it's projected budget based on what we think that we're going to have. You know, just because we'd budgeted it projecting that and hoping that we get that and thinking we're going to get that, I mean, if you don't have it, you don't have it. I mean, if we do not have it, you know, when we said we...
You have actual money, you have projected...
Yeah, but we didn't have that in the bank when we made the budget. We said, this is, you know, what we project that we're going to collect. Well, it would not have been collected in the past.
And I think everyone needs to understand, it's not like, you know, the three of us sitting around and saying, well, this is more our projection.
No, no.
No, the, the projection comes from the state. This is a, this is how much that you've, you know, that you're going to collect, this is what, you know, the number is, what you should budget here. And then you fill in your appropriate lines. And, and I think that there's something else that, that's really being overlooked here. And, and that's with, you know, whenever I was president, the one thing that, that I harped on more than anything was that the regional jail bill is an unfunded mandate by the legislature. So it's, we're not paying for just our deputies taking somebody to jail. We're paying for anybody who goes to prison, and that's with the state police or anybody. So if you got, you may have, you know, you may say, well, you know, if we cut down to four or three deputies or whatever, you know, that it's going to reduce our regional jail bill. That's not the case. You know, you, you know, if you cut down on deputies, you'd get more state police that come into your county. So regardless, it's a flaw in the system. And our legislature has, they have it since the inception of this, when coal severance was running high, you know, and everybody had money, and that's what you paid it with, you know, they chose not to fix this. And now it is a burden for the counties. And counties, even at the County Commission Association, at these meetings, every county in the state is feeling this. And it's the southern counties that are feeling it more than anybody now. So just, you know, whenever, whenever you're talking to your friends or you're discussing this with somebody else, you know, make sure that you understand, you know, what is actually going on. Because this is a, this has been a major problem since I came in on the commission four years ago. I've, I mean, I've complained, I mean, I've complained about this, and we've talked about this in county commission meetings, but it can't be addressed just by the county commission of one individual county. This has to be addressed by the legislative body of this state. And they have chose to kick the can down the road, and now the chickens have come home to roost. And that's what's happened. Sorry for my analogy. I think we can all...
It's been a while, I think eighteen counties, last count, was behind.
No, there's more than that. It's almost every county in the state which... Go ahead.
Also the...
Oh, I'm sorry, he tells you to go, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Also, the Sheriff's Association, they, they've got something together that we're, we're going to try to bring in from legislature to help us with the jail bill as well, because that affects our office just as much as it does anybody, and probably more. But, so hopefully, we've got a, we've got a voice to speak for us in legislature now, so we can, we can maybe in the future, do the grass...
Well, I think that's so important, because these different organizations across the state are in the same boat as we are. We need to have a unified group giving the same message. Look, you guys are going to have to find some way to fund these jail bills, or fund a significant portion of it. Because, you know, we never got behind when we had the coal severance on these, because we always had it to put in there and things. But now, we're looking at a deficit, a growing deficit, and, you know, and like I said, from what I've read about how the Supreme Court has handled it before and things, they basically say, it's your baby, do what, you know, and I think what they really want is the legislature to act on it, to provide a funding source for it. Because, you know, back when, when the original laws of jails and things, we didn't have the opiate epidemic we have now. And, you know, and that's been a tremendous burden on, on the jail systems everywhere. And this is something we're going to have to have a solution to. So, the other thing on, on the budget that I wanted to mention is, there's a procedure we follow for overtime approval. I approve them on overtime, there was a sound. And I want to make sure that, you know, everybody's aware of that and things. But we have, that's about all I have to say on the budget, other than I'll be meeting with the individual office holders and talk about what possible cost we may. I talked to the prior sheriff before about some things with how they run the deputies and things to save gas and things of that nature. And Gary and I can get together with the commission, get together with Gary, and try to figure out how best we can save, save money from that end. But now, next thing on the agenda, do you guys want anything on the budget? Okay. Next thing on the agenda.
One other comment on coal. I was looking back over the last three years, Lincoln County boss, forty million, just coal value. That's not the other, the commercials that's related to coal, just in coal value alone, anything else.
And I think that's been reflected in our budget, you know, that this thing, I mean, that's not, I mean, I'm working in the county right now, you know, I'm working in Boone County, and that's one of the things that was not done during, you know, their school board budget. You know, they didn't, they didn't act on, you know, for, or even, you know, sometimes you have to look at the, you know, look in the crystal ball and say, hey, listen, you know, coal's going down, we probably don't need to spend as much money. And that's what they didn't do there. And then you take, you know, and then everybody in the county takes pay cut for cause of it. You know, and that, and this is one of the things that I want to say about this, we, we didn't do that. We knew that we were not going to get this stuff, and especially in our coal line item, and, you know, we, we didn't budget that way. You know, we didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a train wreck like that happened with Boone County Schools. And I mean, you know, and if anybody's familiar with how a budget works, and if anybody's familiar with what's going on in the county, you know, we, I think we were very physically conservative with our budgets. And with what we're seeing in, in coal, you know, where we were able to fund our regional jail bill for years with that, and what we're seeing with personal property, you know, we, people need to recognize that these are two different budgets that we're dealing with, not just one. You know, but I think that these people, I think we've done a really good job handling this, as far as whenever you look at all these other counties.
I think probably, you know, we're going to have to look at this budget. Last year when we did the budget, we phased out pretty much everything, all of coal except the jail bill. And I think we're going to have to try to come up with some way to pay part of it out of general county, because I don't think we can ever depend on this coal severance, or not to the extent we might, that's...
Well, I, I think when you develop your budget, the, the state auditor does that too, you know, knows there's not going to be that, that money available.
Just like, what did you say, our jail bill was forty, about forty, we got fifteen for a quarter. Fifteen thousand for three months, and our jail bill, average is about fifty, you'd say. So we didn't even get enough to make a dent in one month. And that's all we're going to get for thirty. I mean, everybody kept telling us, in January, you'll get a bigger coal severance check. Mining is coming back, and they're mining more, but it wasn't.
But, I mean, and you don't see that tax revenue for two years anyway, whenever they start. But, you know, and one of the things I just want to add is that, you know, with this regional jail bill, I think that whenever you look at something that's an unfunded mandate, you know, they are telling you that you have to pay for the state police, that you have to pay for the town of Hanlon, you have to pay for West Hanlon and your deputies, you know. I mean, I've always, I've always said this, and, you know, and you can disagree with me, I don't care. But, you know, all, I think all that I would ask as a county commissioner is that they pay their fair share. You know, if it's the state police, let the state take care of that. If it's a county, let the county take care of that. But we're not even getting that. And I, and I think it's, it's horribly, and, and I just, it's, it's disgusting.
I think what's really bad about this is, we're being penalized because we're going to put more people in jail. I mean, basically, because you're going to get paid per person per day, okay? And to me, that's a slap in the face of the law-abiding citizens of this county, that we have to restrict what we do otherwise, so that we can pay for these people that are basically not, not contributing to society anyway, that we're having to take care of. And I think that goes back to what KK says, this has to be done at legislative level. I don't think we have the monies to do with it, I mean, you know, unless this thing comes through otherwise. But I don't, you know, having been involved in some of these things that you don't ever know, you got to, you got to, you got to make your decisions based on what you know. And what we know now are these numbers here.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have any new resource, oil and gas resources, earth movers and stuff like that, where we could get more money?
Guy, you can probably...
Oil and gas, that's one of the areas that is down this year in the county. Oil and gas royalty is based two years, like, what's budgeted for seventeen is what actually was paid in fifteen on oil and gas. If you talk to some of the, the researchers that come in and research mineral, they think oil and gas may pick up in a southern part of West Virginia. But when that will be, two, three years down the road...
Do we collect from them now, though?
Do you collect two years? Uh-huh. Like, whatever, say you have royalty, whatever company was paying you royalty turns that into the State Tax Department, and then they give it to us.
Are we collecting everything you can from them? Are we collecting all the fees and taxes and stuff that we can from them?
It's, you know, again, that's a, that's a, the company turns it in, what they pay to the State Tax Department.
But are we requiring from them everything that we can?
Well, I think what Guy's trying to say is that the state, you know, there's certain things that we collect here, you know, as far as we assess, and there's certain things that the state assesses. And I, are you, are you talking about, you know, whenever you say the state, we're talking about when oil, gas, the state assesses them. And so the numbers that we were getting is what the state has assessed or basically sent down to us. You know, they reclassified, you know, this, this coal as not being mined, you know, not, not, not an active mine. So therefore, it went from twelve million dollars to one million.
So on your property, on your property, you have mineral, you have the mineral rights to your property, you have oil and gas rights. State assesses your oil and gas, the Sessions Office doesn't do anything with the oil and gas. And if you're getting paid royalty, that gas company turns in the royalty that you get to the State Tax Department. They turn it to the Sessions Office. Same way with coal, the State Tax Department now use all the coal in the state, in the county. We have nothing to do with coal, Guy. We can't even protest like that ten million dollar difference in that one mineral, we can't protest for it.
One of the things on the budget that I did mention, I wondered to mention when I talked about the hiring freezes, also, I'd like to request that all office holders, I don't want to say don't do overtime, but I think that we need to really look at examining whether we need to. And I, and I'm sure that, you know, and this is a problem we got into with a lot of overtime and things back when...
KK dealt with it.
And, and we, we have a procedure in place for overtime and things of that nature, but, that you have to submit later to the commission, and we approve it prior to being, before you, before you occur the overtime. But I would like to ask, and I would be willing, because the commission approves it, I'd be willing to, you know, to expedite things. I'll be willing to look at the overtime requests and things like that myself, and keep the commission up on, so we don't have to wait to a meeting to do things like that, and we can approve them, so we know ahead of time. Because we never know what's going to happen, we may have a flood, and people out working, we may have, you know, a terrorist attack or whatever, you just never know. So I don't want to say no overtime, but it's, it's really important that the, all office holders realize that what we're at financially. And it would be the commission's idea that if we had to do it, we would okay it. But if it's not absolutely necessary, we would have to deny that, the request for overtime. And the only, and I'm not saying that because that's next on the agenda with you, Gary, but I mean, that was one of the things that I wanted to ask the office holders to do, is to best they could to restrict any overtime requests to absolute necessity. And then the commission would, would approve that based upon our, our determination, whether, number one, we can afford it, and number two, whether the priority was similar to what the commission's priority and people's priority are. But anyway, with that, Sheriff, you want to come up and procedure in place?
I think there's much need to request it now, but...
First line request is a labor request for overtime?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, I request it overtime as, as it's him in the window, because I was so, I'm so short-staffed, sometimes things come up with these guys, I can't. It's tough for me, it may be the last day of pay period, and they take somebody to jail. That may give them four or five hours of overtime, because I can't, I can't take that, if it's the last day of pay period, I can't justify putting them off four hours the next day or the next day. You know what I mean, to justify that overtime? So I kind of, you know, put in there, I may get a little high on the, on the overtime hours, but basically just kind of asking for...
I think you request fifty hours?
Yeah, fifty hours, just, you know, but kind of maybe like ten to fifteen hours overtime monthly to play with, so some of these guys, when they, when they do go over. I mean, they're law enforcement officers, things happen, you might be on a murder, you might...
Well, we also have, they have, we have a policy about mental health, taking any...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, mental hygiene, different areas.
Yeah. And I just, actually, I just got a grant for DVPs, for when my guys serve DVPs, that counts as overtime as well, so that's, you know, they're going to get overtime paid for that.
There are, like, clicker tickets and that, and they used to have US Marshals, but that's reimbursed, so those were separate issues, and that's probably separate issue as well.
So we get reimbursed even if we take that overtime, is that correct? I mean, is it, is it clicker ticket?
Clicker ticket, yeah, I don't know about this one for sure, but, I mean, if it's going to be reimbursed, then it was a different category if it's coming out of our...
Yeah, the DVP thing would be, it would be in the same category, where it'd be a reimbursement of what you pay out, you know.
So, I mean, you pay X amount of hours... I don't know. So, talking about budgets, so whenever you request overtime, you want to pay that out of your budget? You're not asking the county commission to pay it out of your budget?
No, no, absolutely not, that's straight out of my budget, yeah.
Well, that was the reason, I'll, I'll...
And all office holders, you know, it's that way, you know, we just want to make sure we have a request in advance and the time occurred and...
That's the policy.
And, and, and...
Because you don't have that particular line, nobody, or you don't have that particular, Guy doesn't for overtime. So that's not in your budget for overtime, but you have...
Oh, we don't have a line on it for overtime?
No.
So it wasn't budgeted?
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's shorthand, I mean, you know, I don't, I have three, maybe four vacancies on my budgets, and have had for a couple of hours. So I said the money's in there.
Is there, I mean, what is the commission's will? Do you, do you want to approve his request for the fifty hours? Do you want to approve amounts, you said maybe about ten to fifteen hours, or do you want to approve any overtime? I mean, now that we're here, we can do this. I think, you know, like I said, I don't care to handle these as they come about.
Has anybody worked any overtime that you owe them?
Uh, yeah, actually, that exists. He's got about twelve hours of overtime.
So he's already, already code your...
Already, yes.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I think we have to pay people what we owe them, that would not be, we can't...
Right.
Well, I tell you what, listen, if you want to, we can address, because he didn't submit for those hours. I think it's still appropriate because we have a letter of request regarding overtime. If you all wanted to approve the hours, he's already worked.
I'm, I'm looking at what he's putting...
Cause he's incurred, he's already done the work.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And it's not, it's not his fault, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know.
Well, that's the whole thing, and I think that's the key is you're, you're new and we're trying to help you. And I think, you know, this is not something that we can do, continue to do, you know? We have a process we go through. But I, I'll tell you, you say he's got twelve, he got twelve hours?
Which pay, is that first to the fifteenth pay, pay period or sixteenth to the...
It would've been the last week.
Last week.
It will be on this, this page.
Well, we're two weeks hold back, so, so, I mean, what, what they, what, last week was the ninth...
It was a, a few days of last week.
Yeah.
So it'll be on the next page.
It'll be on the next page.
Okay. So do, is it, uh, if it's okay for the commission, I asked for a motion to previous twelve hours have already incurred overtime?
Yes.
And also, all those favors say aye? So you didn't work on it? Okay, next on your, on the agenda is Sheriff's request to hire.
Yes, I still request to hire, uh, one deputy.
Alan Ashworth?
Alan Ashworth, Alan Ashworth. Uh, because of, uh, you know, already being down three, uh, new secretary, uh, two deputies. So I definitely, you know, we're understaffed, so I definitely would still request to hire one deputy.
And according to where I read the code, the commission, uh, either can consent to this hire or not consent or table a matter until later on. We, we never get any answers anymore, anymore, that's what I said.
And I have him and Teager still working their things out, John Teager still.
Okay, is there a motion, Sheriff's request to, uh, hire Alan Ashworth?
Uh, I'm moving on to hire.
We could, uh, we, we, I'd like that if it's okay with...
I, I move not to give this...
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Alright.
Thank you, sir. The Corcoran Community Center update.
Glenn Gray from the Corps.
Welcome, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, we just wanted to bring a report to you, something that we've been going and trying to do. One of the things that is very concerning to us is, um, so many people keep asking us, is the center going to close? I feel that right now with the money that we had and the budget that we had, I don't know what we're running probably through until the next fiscal year starts. After that, I'm not sure. So some of the things that I've come up with, and I've talked to, uh, Phoebe Harless, the commissioner, on some of it. I thought about it a day or so, but it is very difficult to do. There's a lot of legal hurdles you've gotta get through, so it's really hard. So some of the other things I've come up with is, uh, I've been wanting to get some programs started, Sunchose Karaoke Night. Some of the people want me to do that. I've got a, uh, older couple and they teach square dancing. I thought that'd be good to have a senior night and to have something like that. While we're doing that, I plan on using the kitchen there and we're gonna try to sell things and to make some money that, that way. Uh, we've got people in the community that keep coming up to us and they wanna donate to the community. I've got some churches now, they wanna help us keep the center up. So that's our biggest concern. I understand that there was money put into this budget for this year to help keep the center running and the bills, I guess, are still being paid by Mary. But, uh, what we're looking for is, is maybe any help that we can, can get. I need help mostly right now with the sewer system. It's broke, it burned up. Somebody said they're trying to call in a contractor. Well, I've already checked with electrician, it's a simple replace, the box and a few wires and we can fix that for virtually nothing. If the motor didn't burn up, that'd be the next thing, but a box has gotta be put on first. I'd like to have permission for us to do that, see if we can bring a contractor.
You all have money over there.
Yes, we do.
That you could cover a guy.
Yes.
I think the, the guy that does the sewer has, was supposed to get an estimate by the end of the day. He texted it or emailed him right about quarter to fifteen and he hadn't got it yet, cause that says he got it a little bit.
And that, that would bring up another question. I understood Commissioner Harless, right, it was about eight thousand dollars for that guy to come there all the time and he throws some tablets or something in there. That thing is only open two days a week right now.
That was our last, that's what we had been paying several years ago when I got to working into it. Several years ago, that's what they were charging. Well, you know, we can't afford that. So we have called them and explained the situation, that it was only being used very minimally and we didn't need it serviced every week. So they had cut back on their servicing.
But we can't stop them completely because they send in the reports to the DEP.
Yes, since the type of system it is, they have to report to the DEP. Well, now that it's been broken and not been working, they're really, you know, saying, we're gonna tell the DEP you don't have the system over there or whatever.
But isn't there someone else or something else we can hire? Or someone that could be trained to do this, cause, cause all he does is walk up to it, opens the gate, throws a few tablets in it or whatever.
Well, he's, he's actually, he's monitoring the stuff and he's, he's reporting those, what he, his results to the DEP monthly. And the reason we started with Kim Ron, we did have another guy doing it from Logan and they were not turning those in. So the DEP came down on us and said, you have three years worth of records you need to be, to put into the computer system. So Rick McDowell helped find a company that could do it and could maybe stay up to date with it. And it's nothing I can do. We asked that, if I could shut and enter those in.
I, yeah, dude, I'm just thinking about, you know, I know that we've, I think we've discussed this before. We discussed a lot of sewer systems, Rick McDowell too. But what I was, haven't, did we not check to see if there was anybody still eligible in the school system that, that did work on, or actually looked at those systems for them? I don't know if they use a contractor.
I know we looked into it and Rick kinda led that charge, so I, I don't...
I just can't, I can't remember, I don't have the notes in front of me.
I don't know, and I know that Kim Ron's who he ended up...
He, he ended up with them, I'm sure he's probably exhausted that avenue.
Right, well, I'm, I'm gonna say he did, cause he, he did work on it, so...
Do you remember Sean?
No. Not specifically.
Yeah. Not till we think you're the sewer expert. Some thoughts about, I mean, I think what we can do is look and see if we can get that cheaper, one thing. See who else does it and if they, if they follow. And I think checking who ever does it for the boards will get out here.
I know they used to contract that area.
Yeah, we might be able to get that one cheaper. The other thing about your, the things you were talking about doing over there, I think when you get those set up, you need to let us know so we can put it on our website so, you know, people can actually, you know, see what you guys are doing over there. Get more participation, you know, get people more involved and such, cause, you know, doing those things is what we want you to do, cause you can also generate your own, some money, you know, and we're gonna help that money and stuff.
Did you, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's...
Did you say you had churches that were willing to make contributions to your...
I've got one definitely lined up right now, and I think there's some others that wanna help too.
So that's kinda, that's part of our thought on having the bills come to you all so you could, you, you as the board can see exactly what it calls. Then you would know what you had to have to learn it. But we can, you know, we know.
We, uh, we've originally changed some offices around, so if you wanna start doing that, we can get you the addresses, you can send to us, and we'll start doing that. We want to get into doing that. The question I also have about the sewer system, when the school was first built, it had a sewer system, the old style. When they added the gymnasium and a couple rooms to it one time, that's when they put in the big system. So my question was, is it really necessary to have that sewer system agitated down there all the time? No more than it used. We had the original tank pumped out three or four years ago Dallas, Lawrence County down. Hadn't been that long. So there's a major...
So this, I think that was the same thing that we ran into with the Harz Community Center.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, and then what, what we wound up, you know, I've made you, Rick can attest to this, what wound up happening with the, with the Harz Community Center was there was actually a new one. I mean, there was a new system that was put in there, right?
Yeah, it was actually a septic system.
Right, that's what I'm saying, a septic system, right. Which was, I think that's kinda what you're talking about, am I correct?
Yeah, there's one there.
Right, and there's already one there, it's being pumped.
Yeah, Rick McDowell says, now this is back years, partly prior to, uh, maybe Doc's the only one, but that the reason they had to put the new septic system in, that, that means, the reason they had to put the new septic system in is because the old one was not, the, it regulated, it was, could not be used. Cause I asked him, what McDowell told me, could I use the, the old one?
The, the thing we need to look, as you were, but the thing we need to look at is there's someone in here that is yet other than that.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Because, um, there, there's, you know, and, and not that I'm an expert on sewer systems of any own, but there is, Rick is our expert on sewer systems. But I know Rick and, and, uh, the situation we had at Harz was remedy, otherwise the law was originally recommended. We need to look at alternatives, get somebody in there other than, who's looked at doing it and have them look at and say, well, here's your best deal here, you know what I mean? Open up the old system or, because it's my understanding, and it may be different because there's another system on top of it. I know like with an individual and you've got an old septic system, you get approved to improve it, you can improve it or whatever, you know, different than putting in another system and things like that. But, but I tell you what, let's do, I, Mary, get a hold, see who can get in there to look at that.
Okay.
And then, uh, I'll talk, I wanna talk some with, uh, Mr. Hilton too and, and see what his ideas are. But, um, I think that we need to look for alternatives on that, cause we're not, you know, you guys a weekend for eighteen thousand dollars for a septic system, you know? But I think the best way to do it is get somebody in there other than who's been doing it and let them tell us what its cost is or what they recommend on what you're saying and things like that. Because, uh, we, we've all written up with new ideas about how to do things, you know, and we could, we could, we could do a lot better if we had more money, but we don't, so that we, but I don't wanna see that community center leave that community. And I wanna see it become more, get more community involved in it too. So to do that, we need to work out memory and, and, and I think maybe from the commission end, we get somebody in there to look at it to make, give us a solution that we can all live with.
That's, that's... Very good, appreciate your time.
No problem. Thank you, Glenn. We appreciate all your guys' help over at that community center, we really do. Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business, possible action, open bid for the annex electrical.
Oh, yeah.
You just got one?
Yep.
And, uh, we got this letter from the public defender.
Oh, good deal, yeah.
Would you like to read that, Mary? Or just allude to what's, what's happening? Or you want me to do the...
You go, yeah.
Alright, so I'm on that board.
Yes.
The public defender, um, and I think it was requested the last meeting by the commission, they wanted a, a letter of interest, um, for the courthouse annex. And, uh, the chief public defender, Troy Adams, has sent a letter stating that they are interested in the office space and they were looking forward to, uh, working out an, an agreeable amount for a monthly lease.
So we got one bid on the annex, is it electrical and gas or just electrical?
Just electrical, okay.
Uh, this is from B and B. Electrical quote, old church, quoted price to perform electrical repairs and upgrades per meeting with Mr. Webb at ten AM and, uh, on January tenth. My price includes all parts and labor to install, half payment requested at start job and half at the end of the job. Dave?
Yes.
Talk to me, I mean, are you, are you, you talk to this fellow, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and, and your, and rations of your discussion?
Well, we had a pre-bid meeting, uh, had three electrical contractors in there and we went through with all the contractors, here's what we want. And, you know, obviously that's the only bid that, that we got back. Now, what this bid is to do is to bring that up to National Electric Code, the NEC. And you might say, well, what is it he's gonna do? Well, you really don't need to say that because they have to put in so many outlets in every room they're required to bring everything up to National Code. They're gonna put in, uh, the only additional thing, uh, Doc, that we're doing that's not part of National Electric League is that upgrade to that one room so that down the road, if we decide to put the electric over there, uh, we'll have the capability of doing that. I'm having them put four twenty-amp circuits in that one room with bus bars completely around it to plug in somewhere around a hundred pieces of equipment. And that'll take care of, you know, we decide to put elections down there sometime.
Now, is that included in his?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Do you have any reservations or concerns about this company or the person you talked to?
None at all.
Okay, that, you know, to me, um, I think we need to do it.
I'm moving that we do it. If we wanna generate any revenue on that building.
Wes was gonna say we...
No, no one's gonna move in soon, right? Can't get any...
I told him, I said, you know, cause he asked me, I, I, I told him, I was like, you know, I said, we're supposed to accept the bid on Thursday, you know, whatever, you know, whatever it is. And I said, I'm looking at, I would say probably two-week turnaround.
Once we get the electrical, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, two-week turnaround on the work, you know? So I was thinking, you know, I told him maybe the first of, uh, of February, if everything works out.
Well, he, he told me if the bid was approved, he wants to start in the morning.
Well, but what I'm saying is it, that, are we looking at maybe a two-week turnaround on what he is?
At the most.
At the most. So that was a fair judgment.
A lot of expert calls, it won't take as long.
Well, and, and we do need, you know, an obligation from the public defender for, but having said that, this has to be done no matter who we put over there.
But, absolutely.
If we're gonna get started and try to do these things, and we're not gonna get any kind of grant funding till we start doing this, you know, once we show that we are, uh, working on it, then we can look more at getting grant money to help us with it. So, um, the bid is nine thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made, I made a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, bid's, uh, heard valid and, and approved. So you gonna get in touch with him or you gonna get in touch with him?
I'll get in touch.
Yeah, quick, quick as a can, you know, of course. And, uh, we will, uh, we understand that we owe half of it upfront and we'll be doing that, okay? Any other concerns?
You mentioned the grant, we've applied for grants for the past two years and they specifically said when they denied us, you cannot get this grant because nobody's occupying the building. You have to show, you have to actually have people in there using it before they'll approve it or that is...
We'll be able to do anything we want downstairs while this is done.
Yeah, this is, you know, that's what I'm looking at too, so we're not just looking at that one particular room or whatever. We're looking to be able to work on trying to get the whole thing done or, or use it for...
Now, are we still gonna look at the same, and I just, this is an exact list and I'm gonna look at that, but we talked about it last meeting about moving everybody over from the, what, Center Block White Building here across the road. Are we, is that...
Yeah, I, I think that, that needs to be done, cause the expense of that and the shape it's in and everything is really, uh, I don't think it's, I don't think it's maintainable that way, so. Plus, um, you know, it, it, it's, it's gonna be more efficient, I think, if we have everybody, you know, and, and I'll work with, uh, the, the Rick and with, uh, Dave and things like that and see if we can, uh, uh, work out things as far as where we put you guys and things like that, so. But, uh, I do think it's, it's, uh, it's, if you look, if you go in there, uh, you, I worry about how healthy of a place it is to work. And, uh, and not that, uh, you know, it's just so old, it's not, um, I think there's problems. I know, well, I think, uh, me and Dave, there was someone knocking on the door over there the other day wanting this and that, and we sent him back over here and things like that. I think it, uh, I think it would help the public because they won't be confused about, you know, where the sheriff's office is and where the deputies are and things of that nature, so. I think we really need to look at, uh, doing that. And that, I think that would be one of the cost-saving measures that we could institute, uh, you know, as soon as we can. So we need to, where the commission needs to, uh, needs to talk to those people. I think they have been talked to, a lot of them have and stuff, and let them know that it's our intention to close it, close it down.
Did we make, I can't remember, there, we took the most, did we make a motion to do that last meeting?
I don't think there was a motion.
There was an emotion.
I don't know that we were, we're, we're no, I mean, you know, as far as, uh, what we're doing is basically trying to save money and I don't know that, you know, it require a motion from the commission to move people from one office to the other, you know? But if, if it did, we will do it. I mean, we'll research, I'll, we'll ask Jackie, and if he has no problems, that's just cause we'll do it. If it requires a motion, then I'll put it on the agenda for the next time to do that.
Yeah, we may wanna look along, work down the road, because we'll probably reach out to them.
Well, that's, that's the thing I'm looking at too, is that might be the direction... Well, that's, that's the thing I'm looking at, too, is that might be the direction we have to go. Plus, you know, provide additional parking, and plus, you know, we're looking at making everything ADA compliant and things of that nature, and that may be required to do some things, and, because you know those buildings aren't. I mean, you know, they're just not, they don't come up to snuff as far as, as far as the ADA does. So we will begin that process to close that building over there and get everybody, hopefully, we'll find a place to put everybody before we close it.
What about the storage units, though? Still using storage units?
Where at, over there?
Well, there's a lot of stuff there.
Well, that's the whole thing, I'm worried, I'm worried about the integrity of what we have there because of those type problems. There's, you know, there's a lot of room in the, in the church, that, you know, those...
I just, I know as a county clerk, there are certain documents, payroll documents and stuff that have to be kept in there, but we, and we need somewhere to put that.
Why don't you go where I look at, see if you can...
Sure, yeah, that's on the, what I say, third floor, yeah, you know, there's some...
Do you think we could get a grant, maybe to scan it and microfiche or something like that? Yeah, we'll work, we'll work on that.
If, if, yeah, if it's where I trust.
I just said that, I thought you were...
All right, any more unfinished business for possible action? No, I'll move on to new business. You've had time to look at the new business as presented, is there any corrections or changes? If not, a motion to approve the new business as presented.
I'm moving.
All those in favor say aye? Motion passing, the bid is approved. Open discussion, Mr. Matthews?
Okay, no, I can't say this.
Okay, Commissioner Harles?
And I want to thank you for taking that.
You don't, you don't want to know.
You've done a great talk.
The only thing, as I said before, I really appreciate the job of Commissioner, President Harless, and I hope I can continue in the steps that she started and help finish the plan that we hope to do for Lincoln County, and make it so much more a better place to live and have a better government-served people.
I'd like to say one quick thing, you was talking about the budget, the serving, and I just wanted to say that the person you've got watching over that brewery is, I mean, we, just like I go in there and want an oil change, you better have your kneepads on when you come through the door.
Why?
I mean, she is looking out.
But I smile when I'm saying it, David, I smile.
Well, and I appreciate that call, you, because I, that's why, you know, servants of the people need to be, you know, we need to make sure things are done right, and I know Mary's a stickler for that. And I don't know if it comes from her criminal justice degree, or if it comes from her past experience and things, but I do appreciate the job she does, too. I don't, did I have anything else I wanted to say?
No, just make sure on February second, the meeting will follow the five fifteen hearing, we don't, it's there in the six.
Okay, and our next meeting...
Paul Riker's, an estate hearing.
An estate hearing?
You sent in an email.
Yeah, well, what I'll do is I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting, and until February second, two thousand seventeen, we'll have a hearing, that's in the regular session, though. No, this is not the one in one in regular session.
Right, hearing starts at five fifteen.
Okay, for a hearing, estate hearing at five fifteen, with the county commission meeting thereafter. Is there a motion?
I'm assuming.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye, we stand adjourned, thank you all.